Director Jamison. Director Jaeger. City Attorney, Fire Chief. Director Dane. The full house.
At about thirty more seconds, Mayor.
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Albany City Council meeting on June twenty-third, two thousand twenty. I'd like to call the meetings in order at this time. Thank you very much. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Johnson, the second.
Here. Thank you very much, Allison.
Thank you.
So today we have a public hearing, item three on your agenda, adoption of the Stormwater Master Plan by Rob Edmonds on page three and four. Next on tonight's agenda is the public hearing, adoption of the Stormwater Master Plan, directions on how to testify and submit written materials or publish in the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at six oh one P M. At this time, there was no written material submitted and no one signed up to speak. I declare a public meeting closed at eighteen oh six oh two. Does the staff have a report for us?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. I do not have a formal report other than to say that did cover the details in a work session on May twenty-fourth where where the council had a chance to to ask questions and to review. So I don't have anything other than I can answer questions if council has had a chance to to take a further look and have any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions or discussion?
No.
Okay, will the council like to make a motion?
I would move for the adoption of the Stormwater Master Plan as presented.
Second. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much, counsel. Thank you much, Rob. Next, business from the public. Business from the public is a person wishing to address the council. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless extended by me. Counselors should hold their comments until business from the council. All written material has been reported to the counselors and entered in the public record. Instructing for getting copies of both records is on the city website under business from the public. The following persons submitted items for the record. Number one is Rich Kellum regarding RV parking. No one signed up to speak. So the council, do you get a chance to read Rich Kellum's, Mr. Kellum's letter?
I did.
And so you want to talk about it during business from the council? Okay, so we'll do that. We'll come back to that during business from the council.
Okay.
Next reading is the second reading of an ordinance. Item A is city services fee methodology. Direct, city manager Peter Cholton, Sean Park, and Director Jaeger on pages five and seven. The first reading took place in the previous meeting, our last council meeting. The second reading is automatic. Sean Kid, Sean Kid, would you like to read the ordinance a second time?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance creating chapter three point one-two city services fee of the Albany Municipal Code and declaring an emergency.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Would the council staff like to speak before we do that?
Mayor, Mayor, Councilors, thanks for the opportunity. We've spent many months and many sessions talking about the budget shortfall and building this vehicle for the city's use in funding services that it doesn't want to lose. As the Democrat Herald editorial pointed out today, the council tonight is faced with a difficult decision, no matter which way you go. And what I can commit to is this, that we will be good stewards of the resources entrusted to us at whatever level. But now I need to turn it over to you for any further deliberation and following the second reading.
Does any other council, any other staff have a report, Peter? Excuse me, council, any other staff, anybody else would like to speak, staff? If that's it, we can move on to the discussion. So Counselor Olson was first up.
Oh, yes, I'm going to vote, I think I'm going to vote in favor of this. However, I'm disappointed in our allowing a for people who are below the poverty line to get a break on the fee unless they are a senior citizen over sixty years old or are handicapped in some way or another. You know, it seems to me, somebody that's right on the border of losing their house, we ought to be able to allow them a fifty percent break on this fee. So I'm debating whether to vote no on the whole thing or just vote no on on the levying of the or the amount of the fee. So I'd like to hear what other councilors have to say about this.
So I, Counselor Novak, can you give me just a second? I see the manager. What, Peter?
Thank you, Mayor. And to address Counselor Olson's concern, we're very concerned about that too. And if you, if you might recall, the last time we talked about this, we talked about phase one and phase two of the low income assistance program. So in order to to start off and have a low income assistance program, the most expedient ways for us to join in with the low income assistance program that's already on the books. However, we agree that that's not enough. We agree that to restrict low income assistance to people who are just senior citizens or who are just handicapped or disabled is not enough. And we need to broaden that to address a percentage of the median income. So that is, that's, that's a part of the program that will be undertaken with, with particular, I won't say urgency, but that's something that we'll waste no time on.
Well, who, who do we have to get together with in order to do that? Or is that just the city staff that does it?
No, we, we're working in partnership with CSC to make that happen. We already work with CSC and and the staff, of course, you know, with utility billing and Sean.
We lost you.
You kind of broke up, Peter.
Okay, I got, for some reason, I got muted.
It wasn't me.
I don't know where you lost me, but we are working with CSC, Community Services Consortium, staff are working with them to work out the details of this, and that would include the utility billing staff as well as Sean Park, who's managing the project.
So CSD, are they somebody that we can count on doing it and within a year or so or less, hopefully?
CSC is the Community Services Consortium.
Yeah.
And we work with them already on the low income assistance program that we have in place. So yes, I'm confident we can count on them to help out.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Novak, give me just a second. Sean Park is the one setting all this up. Let's get something to say. Good, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. To address Counselor Olson's question regarding how and when the, the largest constraint we're looking at in a rebuilding of the low income assistance program is time. What we want to do is flatten out and make more fair the, the low income program across all of the existing utilities as well as this new one. So we have some work to do internally, and we also need to work with our partners at CSC. I would say that a year is a very, very generous timeline. We're looking to approach it more aggressively than that.
Okay.
Can you give us a ballpark, Sean?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. We would hope to have the foundations laid for the new low income assistance program between four to six months.
Thank you. So I appreciate that, Sean. Counselor Novak, you were next up.
Thank you. When last we were discussing this, Counselor Smith mentioned the idea of putting a zero rate in place. Is that still something that we're able to consider?
That, that is something that you can consider. And Sean, if you have those slides available to you, perhaps you could pull up the slide that shows delays on the, on implementation.
I do, just one moment, I'll bring those up.
Counselor Smith, you're next, okay?
Sure, thank you.
So Sean and Matt have been very active in trying to provide or put together information for the counselor, for the council's consumption. And if you'll look down, if you Sean, if you'll scroll down to the, there you go. So if you implement in July, there's no gap, as you see there. If you implement in August, there'll be a two hundred and eight thousand and so on and so forth. And obviously, the later you go, the bigger the gap, gap becomes. But you can certainly implement at zero and then, and then, and then implement the a rate of nine, or you can implement a rate of less than nine later on. The opportunities are almost well, there's, there's quite a few of them when you, when you multiply.
That's your question, Counselor Olson, Novak?
That answers one question, yes.
Do you have a follow-up?
Well, I, I'm still very much questioning how this solves the issue, especially with regard to language that I struggle with that's in there. Fees being adjusted annually for inflation, quote, other charges, any adjustments, the fact that we are saying that an emergency is hereby declared to exist, I still think that there are potential solutions to this emergency, and I would very much like to see it see us delay the implementation of any monetary rate above zero until we further examine potential solutions. I think they're, they're there. I've heard from a number of constituents, and I, I feel that, that it would be wise to, to consider more things. I know this has been on the table for a while, and that keeps being brought up, but I am, I am not persuaded that we have looked at every possibility for closing that gap, and I'm also not persuaded that this is an actual solution. Also, you know, I appreciate the concern for low income individuals, and I share that concern, but there has been no discussion whatsoever of the impact on small businesses and how they will what this will do to them, especially some of those that have been nearly decimated by restrictions and regulations from the last sixteen months. That sort of thing really causes me to not want to proceed full steam ahead. Those are some of my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to comment. Peter mentioned the editorial that was in the Democrat Herald this morning, and I read that last night when it first went online and was concerned about the content, especially I continue, I continue to be concerned about that. I get where they're, they're going with their conclusion, but it's based on incomplete information that should not it should not be incomplete. That information has been out there for three years. We've been talking about this for three years. We've been making budget cuts for three years. We make them equitably across the board. We I could go on, but I won't. I just wanted to point out that, that we have made cuts. We have, we are bound by state law to present a balanced budget, and we've done that. In order to balance the budget, we've, we have made, been making layoffs. We've been canceling or discontinuing programs altogether. We have layoffs pending. We have jobs that are frozen. We, we, and the, the suggestion that we needed to look at other ways to cooperate or to consolidate, work with other governments, share duties, look at, at doing things differently and, and saving money in this and that way. We've done that. This is where we ended up. With, Peter mentioned it just maybe a month ago, the number of cost cutting and cost and revenue enhancing suggestions that staff had made, that counselors had made, that the public had made. We had a, we went over that about a year and a half ago. We've done a lot of those things. Other things were found to be impractical or just too hard. And anyway, we have been working on this for a very long time. This is where we've ended up. We're at the point where we can't continue to do as people ask us to do more with less. We're going to be doing less with less. That's where we are. Unless somebody has a loaves and fishes solution beyond this, I think we're going to have to, to to make a decision in one way or another. I am concerned about the, the impact on, on people with low incomes, certainly. I've been there. My family qualified for food stamps when I was in high school, but we wouldn't apply because my mother was too proud. When we were filling out the applications for financial aid to send me to the college to become the first college graduate in my family, my mom said that she filled out the application with four letter words, zero, none, and same. And that's true. We, I, I understand, and I am very sympathetic, but I'm also sympathetic to people who expect the police to show up when you call them. Some, my, my neighbor is a regular with the fire department. He's got a bad heart. Those things are very important. The, the Parks Department has taken monstrous hits, and this, this won't do anything to make them whole, but we need to keep going. We can't run government like a business because we do the business that nobody else will do. We provide service. Service costs money. Service doesn't have an ROI other than community well-being and safety. We have to decide if, if good enough is safe enough for us. And that's, that's my speech. Thank you for letting me make it.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Your input's really appreciated. Counselor Johnson, you are next up on the screen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will totally piggyback on what Marilyn said because I mean, I too have been in a situation when I was younger and first, you know, being raised on a farm and going out and get a job and then get married and no money, but we have discussed this, some of the solutions that people have given, you know, are good, are good solutions, but they're, they just won't work. You know, we, we've worked on everything so long, and I don't believe that the city is just wasting money. And when we pass, if we pass this, I think it will give staff, city manager, the chance to, okay, we've got this now. What can we do to enhance this, enhance what we're doing now without losing firefighters, policemen, I mean, worker shortages all over. So I would say, I mean, like I said last time, do I want to do this? Not really, but we have to to keep our citizens safe. And I don't think that we're going to be just throwing the money away. I think we're going to use it very frugally, and hopefully people will benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Johnson. Counselor, Novak has a comment.
Yes, please. Am I muted? No. Okay. I'm just curious as to whether we've considered how many of the city services can be converted to the private sector. Have we examined any of that?
Counselor Olson with a comment.
Yes, back in the seventies, when I was mayor, the city, city manager had that very same idea, and he thought we'd be way ahead if we could get rid of our ambulance service and give it to a private operator. And I've told the story to most of you, I think, and you're probably bored of hearing it, but after the private enterprise ambulance had taken over, we had several big wrecks on the freeway. And who did they call to go out there with the jaws of life to rescue people who needed rescuing? It was our fire department. And it was our fire department that loaded the victims into the ambulances, and the ambulance company drove them off to the hospital or wherever they needed to go. And then collected the fee, and our fire department collected no fee. And I then suggested, I'd been against getting rid of our ambulances to begin with, and I then suggested to the council, why don't we get it back, get our ambulances back? They said, yes, we'll do it, and we did. And later I asked one of the private ambulance guys, did we do the right thing? Yes, he said, you sure did. I was the only ambulance available between Albany and Eugene, and if there'd been two calls, second call would have had to get an ambulance from Jefferson or Salem, or maybe out of Corvallis. So I think we shortchange ourselves if we start thinking about private enterprise to solve the problem. Well, that's been my experience, and I, I think it's a good experience.
Peter, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to point out that in, in the federal government, we have, we were on the privatization road since the seventies with a O M B circular called A seventy-six. And governments around the country have been privatizing, and as, as a testament to that, I would point to the fact that the city government, you, all of you on the council have seen consultants come in and provide presentations to, to the council, and that's because that, those functions are privatized. We don't have the staff to retain on hand experts in every field. So we have to privatize those functions. We have to rely on the private sector to provide consultation in many, many different areas. In fact, I would, I would say that it's in just about every department in the city relies in some way on, on, on various private sector components. So there is a lot of privatization. There are A seventy-six referred to functions that are inherently governmental. Those are functions like law enforcement, which you, you can't, can't really legally privatize. But I would, in case, I'm sorry, in case Gina Jaeger has anything to mention, I would invite her or to comment on it.
There are some regulations that prevent us from privatizing certain jobs. The state just requires us to have those in-house. The other piece of that, and maybe Director Jamison can weigh into is, I think with some of our union agreements, it prevents us from going outside the union to contract for those positions. There are just a lot of things that can, that can prevent us from doing that. Also, some of the complexities, for example, here in finance, payroll for government is very complicated. We have multiple unions. We have all sorts of regulations. We have OSHA, we have BOLI, we have all sorts of things that require us to pay a certain way. And not everybody gets that. So if you're going to get somebody that has the same level of expertise, you're probably going to be paying a very similar amount, if not more.
And Mayor, if I might add something else, it's not exactly privatization, but we also rely upon partnerships with other governmental agencies. And I'd offer our pool that we work with the school district to, to operate the swimming pool the same, right now, is we're in a period of transition with Maple Lawn Preschool, and they will, they'll be taking that over. But there are quite a few government partnerships that we have as well.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, I'm going to tell this story just like Dick tells his. Years ago, talk about, you know, contracting out. Years ago, City of Eugene thought, oh, we're paying our janitorial staff too much. So we're going to contract it out. So they did. And the business that they contracted out to paid their people minimum wage, did not train them, and within two years, I think it was, they had to take it back because it just wasn't getting done. And just a, a quick statement about something that happened at the airport in Portland today. There's a lady we were talking to that she, she says, oh, how long have you been working for the airport? She says, no, we don't. We're contracted out. And we get minimum wage. We get no benefits. And basically, they're totally low people on the top, total. They do a good job, but if you contract things out, you just don't get the loyalty, I don't think, if you keep it in-house. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Any other councils have any questions or comments? Counselor Novak?
Yeah, just a comment with regard to the way things apparently are and what apparently the city is bound to do because of BOLI and whatever those other acronyms were that were just mentioned. When I look at this, one of the things that I see is we have a situation that's in need of reform. And maybe that comes on the state level as opposed to the local level. I don't know if there is anything we can do on the local level, or if I'm the only one who feels like this is a situation where reform would be helpful, because again, I don't, I, when I look at the situation, I don't see that this city services fee is sustainable in terms of the growth of everything else, you know, all the things that we're required to do because of the, this the way things are right now. I don't want to, I don't want to call out purrs, but I don't know what else to call it, you know? The things that you have, the things that are in place, the things we have to abide by because, because, because that's the way it is. Uh, that, that is, I think, that, that's at least a factor here, if not a chief factor that, to me, spells the implementation of a fee that's never, ever going to catch up because you have that growth that, and our city manager has pointed this out many times. There's a certain amount of growth, and it's at this level, and then there's the growth of what it costs to maintain the people because of the system, the way it is, and it's, there's always going to be a gap. And that's part of why I sort of want to just beg of everyone, if we could consider just a one-month delay, give one more month to see if things don't change and improve economically. I feel like after the events of these last fifteen months, and we're still not out of it, according to our governor. She's still calling Lynn County high risk. If you're a businessperson in this town right now in Lynn County, it's not good for you. It hasn't been, we haven't been doing business as normal for fifteen months. There are people apparently who've been having a great time. You know, I don't know if any of you have noticed, but there are an awful lot of businesses that have help wanted signs everywhere. We're having trouble getting people to, who want to work because some of them have been paid to not work. We have serious problems in our country right now, and they extend all the way down to our sweet city that we love. I just want to submit to you that this is a huge problem, and I don't, if we could just a little bit tap the brakes, if you could just consider a one-month tap of the brakes, at least until the governor says we can do business as normal, because you have people who have reserves. You have people who've been being paid to sit on their butts, and apparently their lives are great. But you also have a segment of the population that has never struggled harder, that has zero reserves at all, and maybe they're not even in the, in the low income class, or they're not considered that at this point. I just want to submit to you as a businessperson, that there's a class of individuals out here. There's, there's not even, I don't, that's a lousy way to frame it. I don't mean a class of it. I'm, I'm talking about productive citizens. I'm, I'm talking about productive citizens, a segment of our population who have been working their butts off and have never struggled so hard and don't have any reserves. And they're not in the low-income class. They're in the, working their butts off trying to survive. And they're still being told they can't do business as usual. I would just beg of you, could we please wait even one month until our own governor says that life is normal and business can be conducted as normal? I appreciate the breaks you're putting out there in the four or five months from now for low-income people. But please consider others as well. Please consider the segment of the population that has no reserves. Because I hear from them. I've heard from many. I, I get a ton of letters that I don't forward on to you. Um, and I've had one from a gentleman who thinks we're all horrible because we haven't passed this already. But I have many, many more who are saying, please don't do this. Please don't do this to me right now. And I feel their pain because I'm one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Novak. Does any other counselors have any comments? Counsel Kupczynski, Counsel Bartholomew, neither one of you? So I'd like to thank the staff for the work on this. And I'd like to thank the council for the, the debate and the conversation. Uh, I'd like to thank the people that have put in input to the city council and also to the city council, city manager's office. Apparently, we have hard work to do. We're elected to do those hard jobs. And so now it's, um, I'd like to, would anybody like to make a motion?
Yes, I move to, uh, adopt the ordinance.
I'll second it.
We have a second?
Oh, well.
You second it? Counselor Olson? All those in favor say aye.
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 I'd actually like a roll call vote for this one, please.
Okay. Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Counselor Novak?
No.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Yes.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
That's five to one.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next on the agenda would be adoption of resolutions, setting the city services fee rate, Peter Schultzen, Sean Park, Dana Jaeger, page eight-three-eleven. Would the staff have any like, would like to comment?
Nothing further to add, Mayor. Uh, this resolution would set the rate at, uh, at your, with the, you know, the rate of your choice. We have talked for a long time about nine dollars and that's what we built the model on. So that's what the recommendation is. Sean, uh, do you have anything to add? Or Gina?
Uh, thank you, Peter. No, I have nothing to add. The specific questions come up, I'll do my best to, to help answer those.
Counsel, do we have any discussion?
So, um, do we adopt the rate at this point, or are we just saying we're going to have a rate?
So the next thing would, I'd be asking for a motion to set the rate at what's written, nine dollars. Is that correct, Peter?
I'm sorry, I was muted. That is correct.
Um, so there's, so I'm supposed to ask for a motion at this time? Do the council, no, council on discussion. Is there Counsel Novak first, then Counsel Johnson second?
Thank you. I would like to request, um, one month at zero. I'd like to put forth a motion that you consider, that we consider one month at zero.
We have to resolve this first before we want to another motion.
Okay.
I, I would ask Allison for, if this is correct, but I, you, I would think that you could change the effective date to August first if you wanted to. And then, uh, adopt it at, at the rate of nine dollars.
Yes, I don't see any reason why not.
So do we have to vote on this particular motion for, uh, this particular thing first and then make a change, or?
I'd like to hear the motion stated a little more completely.
But we already have a motion on.
We have a motion right now, already.
We do have a motion to consider one month of, with a one, uh, set the city services fee rate one month at zero. Is that correct?
Yes.
So would Counselor Novak's request be an amending motion?
No, because we didn't have a motion to adopt as written.
Right.
Okay, so her motion with the supersede what's on, so we would go, is there a motion for this one first and then we do the other one or just go to the other first?
As I understand it, the motion from Counselor Novak is to adopt the resolution setting the services fee rate at zero for one month. And it wouldn't hurt to spell out then that after that, it would become another rate. Thank you, Sean. Sean Kidd, I see you.
Hey, so if the council is wanting to, to go that route, to have the, uh, rate be zero for the month of July and then take it, go to the nine dollars effective August first, the easiest way to do that would be to have either Counsel Novak withdraw her motion and make a new motion that has the fee set at nine dollars to start August first. Or to vote no on the current, uh, motion and then somebody make a new motion to start the fee on August first rather than July first. And that would effectively be the same thing. You'd have zero on July, uh, and it would be nine dollars effective August first, so.
Is, would there be any way to set it contingent on the governor making our state open one hundred percent? That, at, at such time as she says that we can go back to doing business one hundred percent at that time that we implemented?
You could do that if that's, if the council chose to do that. Yeah, and I'll leave that, uh, I'll leave that to the, the finance department on how that will affect budgets and how you would budget things at that point. Uh, but yeah, I mean, if that's what you wanted to do, you could do it.
Well, on behalf of an awful lot of business people who've reached out to me and also individuals who aren't necessarily business people, I think that they would appreciate that opportunity to have this not be implemented until we're given permission from our govern, governor to go back to business one hundred percent as normal.
I'd be in favor of that.
Thank you, Dick.
Counselor Johnson, that's a comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do not believe, we don't have a crystal ball. I do not believe that i- it would be, um, good to wait the month. It might be two months. It might be four months, but I think we need to bite the bullet. We need to do it now. We could always adjust it next year if we, you know, if the economy gets great. And, uh, one month, two months, I don't think we're gonna be out of this by Thanksgiving. I mean, businesses aren't gonna just snap their fingers and all of a sudden be good, uh, unfortunately. But, uh, I just think we need, we've been discussing this for so long, and I think we need to bite the bullet, do it, and then adjust it next year if we can. Thank you.
And I would beg for a one-month reprieve.
Counselor Novak, city manager, go ahead.
Yeah, just as a point of order, I think there's a motion on the table, but there's no second. And sometimes counselors second a motion so that there can be discussion.
Uh huh.
Uh, but there hasn't been a second. And so technically, there should be no discussion until that second.
Right, I'm sorry. My, my bad.
So what was, so Allison, can you read the original motion by Counsel Novak?
What Counselor Novak said was she moved to consider one month at zero, which is a little bit shorthand, but I think we kind of understood. So, and there was not a second, and so the motion could die.
So I do need to call for this, call for the second. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it so we can have some discussion on it.
Okay, so we have a second? Okay, so any other discussion? Counselor Novak, I see your hand up still?
Yes, I appreciate the second, Counselor Olson, because again, on behalf of other business owners in this town and individuals who are not business owners, who've expressed to me that they have no reserves. At the very least, if we cannot wait until our governor says, okay, you can do business again, just the way you used to, could we at least give the people who are in this camp a one-month reprieve? A one month in hopes that, that maybe by August first, things will be different. I, I beg of you.
Thank you. Counsel, Counsel Olson?
Uh, yes, I'd like to ask a question. Uh, does the governor say that our county can be open for business as usual? Or do we have to wait till the governor says the state can be open for business as usual? Does anybody on the staff know the answer to that? I would think if, if it's the, just the county, I think, I think Lynn County is close. And particularly if they can get some conservative business people to get vaccinated and encourage their constituents to get vaccinated. I think we can get over the hump in fairly short order.
Thank you, Counsel Olson. Did you have something?
Does anybody on the staff want to answer to that question?
Did you turn, did you have something?
Um, not to take Chuck Reno's, uh, his position, I don't know as much as he does. I know that Lynn County is one of the six counties in the state that's still in the high-risk. Every other county in the state is either moderate or low-risk. Um, once, you know, the governor is saying that once there's a seventy percent vaccination statewide, then all restrictions would be lifted. And currently, we're at sixty-eight point seven percent, um, which is roughly forty-two thousand people away from the seventy percent. But some counties, Polk County just became the latest to hit the sixty-five percent level that dropped them in, into low regardless of their, their cases. So once you get to sixty-five percent, you're automatically put into the low-risk category, um, and you can open up a lot more. I don't, I think it's fifty percent, but Counsel Novak probably knows more about the restaurant capacity than I do. I think at high-risk, you're limited to twenty-five percent. At low-risk, you're at fifty. Once they, um, once the state lifts everything, I think it goes back to a hundred, so.
So Michael, where is Lynn County sitting right now?
We're still at high-risk. Benton County is in low-risk and Lynn County is in high-risk based on, well, I think it's based on pieces and the fact that I think Benton County has more than sixty-five percent vaccination already. So that's why they're low.
What's our vaccination rate right now? Do you know that?
I don't. Um, but it's, it's substantially lower than Benton's.
Okay, so Counsel, Counsel Kupczynski, you have a comment, please? Thank you.
Yes, the, the governor did announce that there was not going to be any more changes in risk levels for the counties individually. And thanks to the citizens of Lynn County, we're in high-risk. So here we are. And I echo, uh, strongly what Counselor Smith and Counselor Johnson have said about this issue that needs to get done, that needs to get done tonight. And I'm gonna be voting against any, uh, motion to try and change what we've already had on the table.
Okay, so thank you, uh, Counselor. Your hand is still up, but Counsel Novak?
Right, I'll put it down, but so am I hearing everyone correctly that no one would consider one month?
I still have to call the question.
I'm sorry.
So, um, we have a second motion and a second, uh, for Counsel Novak's, uh, the delay of one month, uh, delay of one month, correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so let's, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Of the delay?
Yes.
Wait, wait, stop, stop.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was confused on that. Could you?
So, so, for those, those in favor of delaying one month, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with motion failed, four to two. So on, on the matter before us, setting city services fee rate, um, do we have, is there a motion to pass it as it is?
I move.
Let me ask Peter real quick. Peter, go ahead.
It was just to, just to point out to you, Chief Wooten points out that the vaccination rate in Lynn County is fifty-four percent.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Shane. Okay, Chief Wooten. So is there a motion to pass it as, as written?
I would make that motion. I've moved to adopt the rate as written.
Do we have a second?
I would, I was second that, but to clarify, to make sure it was at the nine-dollar fee or the fee that we proposed.
Correct.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Another roll call vote, please.
Olson?
Um, I'd like to abstain, but I'll vote no.
Thank you. And sorry, I didn't put your title in there. Counselor Novak?
No.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Yes.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
That's four to two.
Motion passes four to two. Counselors, uh, Justin, do you have a still for something? Okay, thank you. Okay, establishing of, uh, sick, item six, uh, subset B, establishing a low-income assistance program for city services fee. Peter Schultzen will be speaking, or Sean Park, our correct Jaeger. On pages twelve and thirteen, would you, is there a motion to pass it?
Move for adoption of the resolution as written?
Second.
There's a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Uh, so item C would be approval of special procurement for Wonderware software upgrade. Uh, Mr. Mike Bryan's gonna speak with us today, pages fourteen through seventeen. Would the staff like to speak at this time? There's no Mike Bryan gonna speak to us this evening?
Yes, sir, uh, I'm here.
I can barely hear you, Mike. Can you please, uh, turn your mic up?
I'm here, watching.
But Matthew, can you see if you can help him with that?
Unfortunately, there's not much I can do if it's a hardware issue on his side.
Okay. So can, I can, can anybody else hear him?
Mike, Mike, are you on a, uh, one of the all-in-one PCs? I'll take that as a yes.
Is he at home or at City Hall?
At home.
Yeah, okay.
There he is, picture.
Yeah.
You, you might try, uh, dialing into the phone number. I can email that to you really fast, but that's not gonna be super quick.
So city engineer Stacy Belz Castro turned her camera on. Can you speak to this issue, Stacy?
I'm gonna try to. Mike's probably gonna be cringing at home because I will get some of this wrong. So, good, good evening, Mayor and counselors. Um, Public Works uses, um, PLCs to control and operate a lot of the process controls at our sewer lift stations, our water pump stations, um, treatment plants, hydro generation, and the list just goes on. Um, what this request is for is, um, so Wonderware is the software program that's used to interface with the equipment. Um, and it is used universally across all of the equipment that, that Public Works operates. Um, this request is to purchase an upgrade to the Wonderware software. It's sold through, um, the authorized distributor. Um, I believe there's just one in the Northwest that, that distributes this software, industrial software solutions. Um, are there any questions?
Counsel? Uh, Counselor Smith, have a question?
Yes, um, money is budgeted from what source?
Um, so the way that, um, the Mike Bryan's work group, um, works is so they do provide services across all of the funds. So water, sewer, wastewater, and stormwater that's in Public Works. And so they, they basically, they, um, bill to, to the different, different funds.
So, so these are not tax dollars that are paying for this, they're user fees?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Good.
Any other counselors have any questions? Um, is there a motion? Any other counselors have any questions? Um, is there a motion?
Yes, I would move to adopt the resolution um acting as the contact we board awarding a sole source contract to industrial software solutions to procure Wonderware human machine interface software.
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion, counsel? If not, uh, we're gonna call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. None have, so the motion passes. Item D, approving Kurt Sorty access easement and a city maintenance easement, Matt Rutgers, Matthew Rutgers. Would the staff like to speak at this time?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and and good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. So, I'm here tonight to to chat fairly briefly about a, an item that we actually brought uh to council work session back in April. Um, this is a, we've, we've talked about this a couple of times. This is for Kurt Sorty's got a piece of property. And I'm gonna share my screen real quick, hopefully, so you guys can see what I'm talking about. And if I can pick the right screen. And hopefully, everybody can see that. Okay, so, uh, we've, we've been to council, like I say, a couple of times on this. Uh, we were back in April. We came to a work session, talked about, uh, we initially had come to council and given some direction to to go away and do an agreement to provide an easement to this landlocked parcel, which is noted as Sorty Parcel Two on the map. Uh, as we discussed in in the work session, uh, working through that agreement, we we realized it was gonna be easier to just do an easement this time. Um, at the work session, council asked for us to kind of go back uh and bring back some additional information as well as the draft easements, which that's what I'm here for tonight. We, the, we did provide some additional information, that being the the prior uh council meeting that was done back in June of two thousand twenty, uh, which talked about some of the underlying issues that was included in your packets tonight. Uh, really here to to answer any questions that you do have. Mr. Sorty, I believe, is also on the line tonight. Uh, if there's any questions for him.
Any questions for Mr. Sorty? Any questions for Director Rutgers? Counselor Smith, Johnson, Counselor Johnson, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Um, I had read in the memo, page two or twenty, whichever one the numbers write, uh, that in as part has denied um the easement due to the impacts to the natural resources. And I actually had the chance to talk to someone uh regarding easements. And they said that if there's a landlocked piece of property that if the person is denied the access, they could go to court. And apparently, a judge would probably rule in favor of the property owner because uh they need access to the property. I mean, I feel sometimes that if you buy a landlocked piece of property, you know what you're buying. But that, that's what I was told anyway, uh, right or wrong, I'm, I'm not sure. But that, that was the experience that this person had, so, um, I mean.
Good, thank you.
If it doesn't hurt, then if it doesn't hurt the natural resources and looks like they're gonna be responsible for signs and everything else, uh, I don't think I would be opposed to it unless I hear something else. Thank you.
So, I need to ask if there's a motion by the council, and then we'll have discussion after this. We have a second.
And we actually do have a a resolution attached to this, if that, if that helps.
So, the resolution, what page is that on?
So, the resolution should be on page forty one, and it's a, basically be a resolution. Um, it'd be granting of the easement uh to Mr. Sorty and accepting an easement from Mr. Sorty for our, our piece of property on the west side of the Kalapuaia. And uh also authorizing Sid, the city manager or city staff to enter into the actual agreement, so we don't have to come back for signatures.
I move we approve the resolution, authorizing, accepting, and granting the following easement as as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say, or any discussion?
Yeah.
So, Counselor Johnson, before I can show up, so, um, go ahead, Counselor Olson.
Uh, yes, on on page twenty. Um, so, as as Bessie mentioned, uh, the parks, in the past, parks have denied requests uh to the access um due to the impact it would have on our natural resources. And I don't see any comment from the staff uh changing their mind on that factor, so. And I know it's new staff and um or different staff from the ones that didn't uh approve in the past.
Yeah.
And there's been a whole bunch of stuff going on. Uh, and um I think I would like to put this off until maybe staff has a chance to look at it a little more deeply and um decide whether or not to really think it's a good idea or not.
So, I, Counselor, Director LaDane has a comment, so Director LaDane?
Yes, and thank you very much for taking that into consideration. We greatly appreciate it. Um, I'm, I am here to say on behalf of our, the department, uh, we are in favor of moving forward with this easement. As um, uh, in working with Matthew, um, the planning department has been absolutely amazing in taking our feedback and our concerns and making sure that they were gonna be addressed. Um, and additionally, I think also part of the past reason why um uh that the um uh previous leadership um wanted to make sure that it was a council decision and not necessarily one that was decided by a department director. So, I very much appreciate you taking our uh concern into account. Um, but I would like to say that we are in favor of granting the easement.
Right.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Olson, Director. Uh, sorry, your hand up, city manager, do you have something else?
Well, no, I was just gonna say essentially what uh Director LaDane just said, that the staff have put quite a bit of work into this and working with Mr. Sorty as well. And uh I think Kim just summed it up pretty well right now, that we have no objections to the, to the arrangement that's been worked out.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Bartholomew, you have something?
Um, yes, I just, it, I noticed that the easement for Mr.
Sorty.
Sorty, thank you, uh, is a twenty seven foot wide. And I have, I have hiked that, that trail, so that seems pretty significant to me. Um, but I'm assuming that it's because it's comparable to the size of the road where it ends.
So, the, the easement width was, was driven on a couple of different items. So, one of them being is, is lined up well with the end of the, the width at the end of the hammerhead. Um, it also will allow for, you know, the, the property, if if ever, you know, if he's able to to get through environmental reviews and floodplain uh to build a single family home, which is all that's allowed out there, it will never be developed into a big subdivision. It's only gets one, one single home. Um, it would allow for, for, for grading uh as well as utilities, because it'll be served, it's within the city. It'll be served by suburban water. Um, so twenty seven feet is a little bit wider than we would normally see for a driveway. It does not mean that, that the driveway itself is going to be twenty seven feet wide. Most likely, the driveway will be twelve to twenty feet wide. Um, with some, some room on the edges for utilities and other things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do you have, your hand is still up? Do you, are you, are you done with your comment? Thank you. Um, any other counselors have any discussion or any questions? If they're here, if I hear none, I'm gonna go ahead and call the vote. Uh, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Sorty, for hanging on with us today. Okay, let me go back to my agenda. Awarded contracts, item number seven on your, on your agenda. Um, A, item A is contract amendment with Angelo Planning Group for planning services. Uh, Matthew, your mic's still on, your camera's still on. Uh, page is forty three. Would the staff like to speak at this time, Matthew?
Sure, that'd be great. I'll, I'll be fairly brief, uh, because I've got this item and actually the next one. Um, so back in September of two thousand eighteen, the city of Albany entered into a contract with APG to provide planning services for a three-phase project and updating the Albany Development Code. Um, we're currently kind of wrapping up that, that phase three, and we're anticipating it to be done in uh at the end of of twenty one. Uh, we've, we've made several important, well, we finished several important projects, um, and with them nearing completion onto our kind of next priorities. And one of those next priorities that council had actually identified uh towards the top of that was uh an evaluation and updating of the development code for our mixed-use zones. So, we're hoping to just kind of keep the work going or the train rolling, if you will. Uh, and, and we'd like to, to complete the mixed-use zone project. We're recommending adding a fourth phase to the APG uh current contract uh rather than initiating a new solicitation process. Um, relying on uh the previous competitive process and expanding the contract is gonna be more effective and leverage APG's experience with our code, um, our staff, planning commission, and and council. Uh, with doing that work, it's, excuse me, it's just expected to result in less total expense and a better finished product for, for the community. Uh, the funding for the amendment, uh, it's from the Community Development Department. Uh, the project was anticipated in the adopted budget. The new by any budget that we just adopted, and then there's adequate funds available. Uh, so staff's recommending the council authorize uh by motion a total contract increase of sixty four thousand six hundred dollars for a phase four.
Thank you. So, is there a motion?
We don't have a resolution or thing on our, in our paperwork at all, which is, I would move that we approve that uh contract increase of nineteen percent.
Second.
Is there a discussion, counsel? I see Counselor Johnson's hand up.
Yes, I was just wondering, was the mixed use um not included in the initial contract to begin with?
That's correct. The, the evaluation or a bigger evaluation and update of our development code for mixed, mixed-use zones um was not part of that original contract.
And was that because of the state law that was passed?
The, the focus of the contract, the original contract, was for uh HB two thousand one that we're all also familiar with.
So happy with, I know. All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any discussion? Any other discussion with counsel?
Uh, Counselor Olson.
Well, Counselor Olson?
Yes, um, am I right that the money for this comes out of the general fund?
So, the, the money, uh, the, yes, it, it, it all does come out of the general fund. Uh, planning is funded through uh general fund. Um, it is part of uh planning's budget uh that was approved. So, in a way, it does come out of general fund, but it is, is part of the approved budget.
So, I just want to point out to the public that here is another load that the state has dumped on us. They dump all this money on us to downgrade our single-family neighborhoods. And I am just disgusted with our state government. Editorial comment, it's nothing to do with the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Uh, Counselor Novak, you have a comment?
Yes, um, actually, just a point of clarification. You had said uh that the uh rate is going up by nineteen percent. Was that correct?
What are we talking about?
Um, the, I'm sorry, I, I'm a little bit, uh, I missed.
Charts on page forty three.
Yeah, the, the amount, you, you're asking for a nineteen percent increase. I just lost the gentleman's name that's speaking to us. It just fell out of my head. I apologize.
Director Rutgers.
Yes, Director Rutgers, Matt Rutgers. So, I just want to make sure I heard correctly, because I, I feel like I missed something. What you, what you're presenting is a need for a nineteen percent increase in the cost of working with this company of advisors. I, forgive me, I, I.
So, so correct, it is a nineteen percent increase over the original contract amount. But this nineteen percent is for adding on a completely new phase, addressing a completely different topic, which is the, an evaluation of our mixed-use zones.
Right, which Counselor Smith pointed out, did not, not Counselor Smith, but Counselor Johnson pointed out, was not originally there. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was tracking. I, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Novak. I see, city manager raises the hand earlier.
Uh, once again, uh, Mr. Rutgers has explained it. I was just gonna point out that that is not an inflationary nineteen percent. That's to pay for additional work.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, Matilda, your Counselor Novak, your hand is still up. Okay, thank you. So, any further discussion, counsel? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you, motion passes. Uh, the item B, so, section seven, item B, new contracts with DLW L and at Civil West Engineering for planning services. Again, uh, Director Rutgers is up on the table again. Would you like to speak to us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, the, this contract that you have is actually, uh, as you've probably seen in Peter's Friday reports, uh, planning staff has, has uh experienced some vacancies. Um, through those vacancies resulted in significant impact to our project delivery. You know, we have a staff of, of four current planners and two of them um left for, for other positions, um, which leaves us in a, in a bit of a pickle. So, what, what we've got here is we actually went out for an RFP for contract planning services that we could use in times like this. Basically, preparing for the future, if we were to ever find ourselves in a position of being down staff, um, so that we could call in a, a contract planning service that could kind of fill that gap while we uh worked on hiring the vacancies. Uh, we went out through a, a competitive bid process. Uh, we got two proposals back from qualified firms, one being Dell uh out of Portland, Oregon, and the other being Civil West Engineering from, from here in Albany. We found that, that both uh of the firms um were qualified and we're actually recommending that uh council award a contract to both Dell and Civil West Engineering for the five-year term beginning uh in July of twenty one. Uh, and it's got an option for extending the contracts to additional terms. Uh, we'll add on one, one thing. One clarifying point is, when we talk about uh entering into a contract, this is a at, at on-call contract, so we will only be using it in times where we need it, where we're experiencing service delays or vacancies. Um, so as far as budget purposes, when, when we do use these to fill vacancies, we will have um the budget savings of basically having a position that's vacant, uh, that we'll be using to backfill the, the contract amount. And I'm here to, here to answer any questions you might have about it.
Thank you very much, Director Rutgers. Uh, Counselor Cupzinski was first up, and then Counselor Smith?
Yes. Commissioner Rutgers, I'm troubled by the resolution only in the fact that it doesn't have, or I didn't, maybe I didn't read it close enough. I apologize if I didn't, uh, any mon-dollar amount, dollar figures or not to exceed uh clause in it or something like that. It just seems like it's absolutely wide open, which concerns me.
So, certainly understand that the, the dollar amount, we don't, we will be limited by contracting laws. I think we're, um, I think it's a hundred and fifty. Gina might be able to answer that question. But the, the, the services that we're envisioning here is, is really just infill um services for vacant positions. So, you wouldn't see a, and we're not talking about big projects. This is, it's not like a big code amendment project, which I just talked about. This is, uh, if we're down staff and we need to assign a site plan review uh to an on-call consultant, one of the two that we see here tonight. Uh, so you're, you're talking a, a couple thousand dollars for that review versus, you know, where we talk about big code amendment projects that can be, you know, tens of thousands of dollars. So, certain, certainly understand your, your point of it not having a dollar amount and that being a little bit concerning. But it is a, an on-call service that there's a very good chance if, if I, if everything goes well and we don't have any vacancies, that we wouldn't use these contracts at all. Uh, that would be certainly our preference. But it's kind of the, a little bit of belt and suspenders in having that backup if, if we need it and really in the interest of our customers.
Counselor, thank you, Director. Counselor Samantha. Counselor, thank you, Director. Counselor Samantha and the Counselor Johnson.
These contractors would be paid wages only, not standard city benefits. And vacation time and insurance and so on and so forth, correct? That's enough, that's an additional saving. It stretches the money that's available for this service a little farther.
That's correct. This is a, this is contract services only, so it's they're just paid in a set hourly wage that they provided with. Their R F P.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson.
Yes, I was kind of going piggyback on what Counselor Kupcinski said, that. At least we have something normally when there's a bid, like say if it's what fifty, seventy-five, a hundred dollars an hour or something, at least we would have an idea of what it is. Because without knowing at all. I mean, it's like he said, it was wide open, so. They had to have given some sort of minimum. What they would take or. Or did they not?
So they, as part of the proposal process, they were required to submit hourly rates, which we used in our evaluation of the of the proposals. So when we, when and if we did use their services, we would be billed based on those hourly rates. It it's not, and because of the nature of the work being very unpredictable. You know, whether they do if and when we assign them a project, if it's a site plan, it may only be, you know, fifteen hundred dollars. Or if it's a a bigger project, it may be, you know, five thousand dollars. But again, we're not talking, you know, tens of thousands of dollars for these types of projects. It's and it's really intended for just infill services. That's why it's. Turned on-call land use planning services. It's really meant to supplement vacancies and staff.
Yeah, and I think that's an excellent thing to do to fill in the gap. Hopefully you can find some qualified people who want to work for our great city. Real soon. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for you, Director. So the numbers aren't in here. Is that protecting their intellectual or their confidential information? Or is it something that's not in the public record?
I, it's certainly public record. It we didn't include it in in this document, just because it's trying to keep the length of it. Down. It was part of their R F P and will be part of the the actual contract that we sign, which which this. This resolution authorizes the city to do, authorize enter into that contract.
So will the city council be able to see that number at some point?
We, I can certainly get those numbers for you if everybody's interested.
Council, would you be interested in seeing?
I have my hand up.
I see it. I'm I'm finishing my question.
Okay.
Okay, so council, would anybody like to see those numbers?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Novak, go ahead.
Thank you. So we, you are looking at or you would like us to approve. People out of Portland as well as a group of engineers that are local here in Albany. Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct. So we, as part of the R F P process, it's it's again on-call services, so it's really depends on the type of work that we're doing. And who we select to do it. And I was trying to see if I could pull the the rates up fairly quickly while we were talking. But basically, it it. They kind of, if we. If we're able to do it the way we'd like, they'd go in a rotation. So we would pick one consultant. When we need a service, if and when we need a service, and then the next time we need a service, we would use the other one. It's really going to depend on, you know, they they submitted their their qualifications as well. So we'll we'll be using that and evaluating where the work goes, i- if and when we use the contracts.
So my question is a little bit with regard to the cost of the people in Portland versus the cost of the people here in our own local community that would feed. Financially our own community. Because I'm always for using local individuals and I think we all should be. I know that sometimes you have to go outside the local community for some reason. If if the people that locally don't provide a particular service, I'm just curious about why you're looking at Portland. And is Portland more expensive to use than Albany? And and you're looking to Portland because what? They they do some things that the local engineers can't?
So this was a a request for proposals process that we posted in the paper and and we we solicited bids from anybody that would submit them. I I, although I'm I'm able to find the numbers, I I would much rather send them out through. Through just an email rather than post them in a public meeting. But I can tell you that the the numbers for the Portland firm were actually probably cheaper.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see the Director Jaeger pop on the screen. Do you have something for us?
Yeah, I would just like to say that in public procurement, we are not able to put a local preference on R F Ps. So we will evaluate any R F P that we that we receive. That is considered responsive.
So we've heard comment, there are questions answered. I can't hear you, Counsel Olson.
Eric, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I think you've already answered my question, but I was going to ask. Are there people who have left the city who would be willing to come back on a part-time basis? And and be able to do this work on a part-time basis? Is that legal? Is that possible?
Through the hiring process, you know, we 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 explored as we we were down basically half of our staff. We explored a multitude of options, which included the potential for hiring. Through a basically a temp agency, whether it be a different staff member or somebody else. By the time those those kind of things played out, it was just as fast to kind of go through our our. Recruitment process, which I I can tell you that we actually did last round of interviews this week for the planner two positions. And we'll be offering jobs to to a couple folks. So pretty pretty happy to be able to say that.
But I think you you answered my question earlier by saying that people who had left the city had found other jobs.
That is correct.
Thanks.
Counselor Olson, Director. Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, I, you know, and all due respect to all the work and everything that we needed. I don't think I can vote for this resolution because I think council needs to know the the cost and everything prior to. I don't think we'd be doing our job if we didn't know what it was going to, at least ballparks. Before we voted on the on the resolution and and if it can only be done by email or or other ways, that's, you know, that's fine, but it's. I don't think we've ever had a resolution that didn't have the, you know, the two. Companies bids, costs and stuff, and so. It makes it a little hard for me to just go ahead and, you know, say, okay.
So, Counselor, is there a motion? Good, Counselor, Counsel Olson.
The people that left, did they leave because we're trying to trim our budget? And if we're trying to trim our budget, should we be backfilling them? I guess that's a question for the city manager.
Thanks, Counsel Olson. The the people, I would, actually, it's an, it's a question for Director Rutgers, but I would say that. You know, there's a lot of reasons why people leave and many of them are personal reasons. I can't comment on the two people I, because I simply don't know. I don't think. But I would, but if I could just take a little detour and go to Counselor Johnson's question. If if you'll notice that this is on-call land use planning services, so. It's to make up for that, those absences. So of course, it it wouldn't be more than what the the cost of two F T E would be. And it would be substantially less than that. And I don't know if perhaps we could put something in the memo that would say not to exceed amount. But I will defer to Director Rutgers. On both counts.
All right.
So the the I can. As far as the the vacancies that were created, you know, I I don't want to, you know. Expand too too deeply into the the personal reasons why why people left. I can tell you that one was following a spouse. Where where they were relocated to a different location and the other one. Found and was presented an opportunity that that they wanted to pursue. It it. It was unfortunate that they left, but, you know, we're we're in the process of refilling those positions. And and to Peter's point, with these being on-call services, we really. We'd be using them just in the time of vacancy, so it's really hard to kind of put this monetary value as far as. It's only going to be, you know, fifty thousand for the year or, you know, five thousand for the year. If if we ended up with a vacancy that we couldn't fill for, you know, multiple months, it's going to be that that equivalent. In consultant services, which is actually less to Counselor Smith's point. Doesn't include vacation or health insurance or all those other pieces. I do have the 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 dollar amounts that we certainly can can send their their fee proposal. Which just has their hourly rates. I can get those sent out to everybody, so you can see them.
Yeah, that's what I would like. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Counselor Bartholomew and the Council, the city manager.
Um, yes, thank you. I'm really interested in this process because of the work that I do with. Because we apply for permits to the city, and so we've had a an extensive delay in our permitting. And it's low staffing. And so personally, I I think this is a great idea for us to have this resource. So that people are not going to be delayed or and cost increases as a result. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. City Manager?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. And and again, I'll bring your attention to the last paragraph of the memo where it talks about the budget impact and and note that. The cost of this would be paid out of salary savings. So, you know, that's already, th- those salaries are already in the in the department's budget, so it would not exceed that.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. So we have, we have a, is there a motion?
A move, we approve the resolution accepting the proposal awarding a contract to both Dell and Silver West Engineering and authorizing Community Development Director to enter into a contract. With Dell and Silver West Engineering for on-call and land use planning services.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion, motion passes. Thank you. Item number eight, approval of agreement I G A with D L C D. For assistance and updating natural hazard mitigation plan, Chuck Farino, pages forty-six through sixty-nine. Would the staff like to speak at this time?
Certainly, Mayor, thank you. The basis of this grant is a partnership with D L C D to provide planning services. To assist us, not to take over, but to assist us in the update of our natural hazard mitigation plan. FEMA has a requirement that jurisdictions throughout the country take, provide a means of identifying ways of mitigating natural disasters. Taking a look at what's going on locally and how we can address that locally here to. To look at those things and reduce costs overall, both personal costs and also financial costs as well. Requirement of that is also to have it updated every five years. Five years ago, our plan was done by Daryl Pettish and also other city staff. And it was a solid and fantastic plan. I think it's going to be a fairly easy plan to update, but having that assistance by D U C, D L C D. Will provide us a lot of savings and staff time that that is done with that. So. This grant provides support from for us in doing things such as setting up meetings, typing. You know, you name it as far as. Provision of services. It's essentially another staff member that we have to work exclusively on this plan during that time period. There's no financial cost to the city associated with this grant and happy to take any questions you all might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chuck. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. I just wanted to say I was thrilled to see this on the agenda. I was involved in the first development of the first natural. Hazard mitigation plan and subsequent updates, and it's a big job. It is a lot of work. And to have the technical expertise and the and just. Personal time from other than our own staff, it will be a big help. We're happy. We have a stupendous plan and we want to keep it that way.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Counselor Kupcinski?
Yes, I'm. Pardon me if I'm misreading something, but I'm trying to figure out what is the connection with the Albany Revitalization Agency. Document that's on page fifty-five to this whole process.
Yeah, my question too.
I'm not certain on that. As far as I know, it isn't associated with that, other than the fact that it ties into the city's strategic plan. In providing, you know, a safe city. You know, there may be some tie-ins in that.
I thought maybe a piece of scrap paper that I didn't buy mistake.
You know, like a dangling part of something or something like that.
Mayor Allison has her hand up.
Oh, go ahead, Allison.
Thank you. I wanted to say that at some point we found some stray pages that had gotten included in something. And that was last week, so my memory isn't holding terribly well, but I, this is quite possible that those A R A pages were simply extras. That we didn't find before we published.
Okay. So can we, can we pull those and republish?
We certainly could, yes.
Very much for that. Okay, so any other discussion, council? Oh, Counselor Olson?
Yeah. Yes, I I see, starting on page fifty-seven. There's several deliverables that we say we delivered and. And that there were, I think it says hearings, and I don't recall that we did any of that.
I, no, 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 sir, not yet. Those will be coming on as a part of the development of this plan. Those were done in the past in the the original production of the plan that was done five years ago. Similar actions will be taken as we we update it here in the future.
Says on on this one, the draft project schedule, target date, March two oh two one. Should that be two oh two-two or or some other?
We did have a meeting with the executive leadership team. They serve as our steering committee for the natural hazard mitigation plan. So that did occur and D L C D was a part of that. That meeting as well to kind of brief our executive leadership team on what the process of the the. The new plan would be and how we're going to move forward with that.
So I guess we don't need to be concerned about any of this stuff. And what what are the natural hazards that we're trying to mitigate? Can you tell me what those consist of?
There's a number. Absolutely, there's flooding. I'm sorry, I'm I'm new to the the Zoom meeting here. The, you know, flooding is is probably our biggest one that we deal with. There is a number of issues that we deal with here in the city. You know, I. Based on all of our natural hazards that we deal with.
Falling trees or?
Yep.
Windstorms, ice storms.
Water.
Water issues that we're currently dealing with. Yeah, there's a number of different calamities that can affect the city. This plan looks exclusively at the natural hazards. You know, natural hazards are something that we can address. We can. A a good example of this is I worked early in my career, we, there was a project down in Douglas County where. There were a number of homes that were within the floodplain. FEMA paid for a grant that helped to elevate these homes. Well, they actually looked to purchase the properties and move them out of the floodplain. Move the folks who were living in there out of the floodplain rather. And the folks that they couldn't move, they would elevate their homes. They would make sure that if flood did go through through there again, that it wouldn't be a a big financial risk that would they have faced in the past. So that's the kind of stuff that they're looking for in this. That's that's essentially what hazard mitigation is looking to address. Ways of, you know, paying a dollar now so you can avoid paying ten dollars in the future.
Thank you, thank you.
People in Blue River profit by something like this?
Potentially, sure. Yeah, and that could be something we look at. You know, I think having. D L C D would be able to provide us with getting those folks in in a meeting that we could talk about, perhaps when we look at, you know, flooding issues and things like that. Uh, and any sort of issues that they have that they're concerned about, we could take a look at and, uh, potentially, uh, address.
Thank you very much. Chuck, okay, um, is there a motion?
I would move to approve the, uh, intergovernmental agreement with DLCD.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Thank you very much, uh, City Emergency Manager. And, um, you and your family for your loss to your father.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor, before Chuck Perino leaves, can I ask your indulgence, uh, just to give you guys a little piece of information? Uh, we found out from Chief Wooton today that as a, as a Coast Guard officer, I have to commend Chuck Perino for probably being the first person to deliver a life jacket by drone, which he apparently did this weekend, so.
First, right? Very nice.
Wow, yeah.
Done.
That's great.
So next is adoption of the calendar.
Moves to approve this calendar is written?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Number ten, uh, we have a bias response initiative staff report from Director Dan on page one zero eight. Oh, uh, City Manager has his hand up first.
Yes, Mayor. I, I wanted to make another interruption and please excuse me for these interruptions. But before we get too far down the road and away from the on-demand consulting services, Matthew, uh, Rutgers has been able to locate, uh, some of those hourly figures that some of you were interested in. So he's able to, uh, provide you some of those figures at this point if you, uh, give him the time.
So, uh, Counsel, are you okay with him giving him the time to talk to us about this?
Yes, please, sir.
Okay, so go ahead, my, uh, Director Rutgers.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen now, so I apologize for the delay on this. Just, uh, quickly pulled this out of the proposals. Um, hopefully everybody can see that. So you'll actually see, these were the, the fee proposals that were included as part of the RFP process. Uh, you can see Dowell, uh, which is the Portland firm, and their key personnel, which is actually the, the primary staff, i- if we were to use on-call services that, that, uh, would be doing the work.
So can you be favored, please, to start or interrupt you? Can you control and scroll out? Cause this is like, or just make it bigger? Cause some of us need reading glasses, but that's something that's small.
Yeah, let me see what I can do here.
It's control and scroll out.
Brilliant, thank you.
Look at one at a time then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, uh, first one that you can see on the screen here is, is from the Dowell fee proposal. Uh, you can see their hourly rates. The key personnel is, is really the staff that would be doing the majority of the work, uh, be charged on an hourly basis. You will notice, uh, under the key personnel, uh, a very familiar name, Tony Mills. That's actually one of the vacancies that was created. Uh, he went, went to Dowell. That, that's one of the ones that some submitted proposals.
Okay.
And then scrolling down, Civil West, which is the, the firm located here in town. Um, you can see their, their hourly rates. Again, key personnel would be the ones that would be doing the, the majority of the work there.
And I can't see the cost per hour.
That's it right there.
Yeah, just move the face, move the face screens over to the left deck. Just drag it over.
How do I do it?
Uh, just click on the top black bar above the faces and just drag it over to the left.
That doesn't seem to work, but that's okay.
I understand.
He's on an iPad.
Oh, he's on iPad, alright. Thank you, Director. I appreciate that. Thank you, Peter, for your attention.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Matthew. I really appreciate that.
No problem.
Okay, now we have a staff report from Director Ding on bias response initiative. Director?
Sorry, yes. Hi, good evening, um, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, thank you so much, and I'm joined tonight by Stephanie Newton, who is the Chair of the HRC Commission. We're coming tonight, um, just to burn action request for Council to express support, uh, for the Council of Governments to help facilitate conversations regarding, uh, regional bias initiative. I outlined the information in the memo that came to you. Essentially, it's, uh, we're coming to you as the City of Corvallis has dedicated money to set aside to look at, um, a bias response initiative so that we can better support, um, and respond to non-criminal bias incidents in the community. And in those conversations, it came out that it is actually a regional issue. Um, and so there's no money is attached with this at this point. Um, it would just be, uh, kind of a, a verbal, um, sign of encouragement that we would be able to go to Council of Governments and say, yes, Albany is also interested and believe that we need to have a regional facilitated conversation.
Any discussion, Council?
Thank you for bringing this.
So we got one, thank you. Um, anyone else have any comments or questions? Uh, Counselor Novak?
Yeah, I'm wondering, I had heard of a few incidents. How many of these incidents are we having here? That necessitate this? I'm just curious. I know, as I say, I've heard of a few things. Are, are we having just like this, a serious uptick? What's, um, if someone could apprise me of that, I appreciate it.
Sure, I can do the best that I can. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure of the statistics, but, um, at a presentation that I went to a few months ago, um, our number was alarmingly low. And I think that was because things were, were not being reported. Um, and I think there's just, um, some additional education that needs to be out there. Um, I'm sure the, the chiefs would be able to, to comment more of it, but it, bias incidents are occurring. Um, and we just need to do a better job, uh, documenting them and, uh, being able to provide resources and information to those who are experiencing them.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Kocenski?
Thank you. Well, since, uh, Corvallis has taken the lead on this, we're just basically collaborating and we're piggybacking on, on their endeavor and they're spending the money. So, uh, I'm all in favor of saying, sure, let's do it.
I forgot, I forgot to ask, I see Commissioner Newton's on, on camera. Do you have something for us?
I'm just here with Kim.
Okay, just supporting Kim, or thank?
Yeah, my name's also on this letter.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other councils have any questions? I have a, two affirmative so far. So, uh, is everybody in favor of this?
Yes.
Yes, I am, yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Well, um, on our part, uh, the HRC reach out and work with our representative over at Corvallis and let them know that, uh, Council is in favor and that, uh, we hope to move forward. So thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Do you need a formal letter? Does anyone, do you need a formal letter to the COG or to the City of Corvallis, um, expressing our support?
If you would like to write one, I'm sure that would not hurt at all, so.
I will ask for it tomorrow morning when I come in to City, City Manager.
Thank you.
Okay, next item number eleven, business from the Council. I know we have one item that was gonna be talked about, and that was, uh, Mr. Kellum's, uh, uh, letter he sent in. And so I have, first on, on my count screen, I have Counselor Novak.
All right, I do have something this evening. Uh, there was a gentleman who wrote to the Council and his intent was that his letter be made public. So I'm going to read his letter on his behalf. "I sent a letter to each city council member on the morning of June ninth, twenty twenty-one, regarding the city budget and the proposed city services fee. The central point I made in this letter was to respectfully disagree with the idea that the Council must pass the city services fee because there are no other reasonable options. I claimed that it is not the case that, quote, 'we have no other choice,' as several other council members had suggested. After sending the letter, I learned that it contained one piece of information that was not accurate and that the correct information significantly strengthens the point I was making. I had previ- previously heard that Albany's estimated financial shortfall was five million dollars for just the first fiscal year of the upcoming biennium. And it turns out that the five million dollar shortfall is for the entire biennium. So the shortfall for the first year is just half the amount I had assumed. It is only two point five million, assuming the five million is split evenly between the two years. With this new information, I am offering an updated version of an option that does not require the city services fee or the city employee layoffs. For the first year of the biennium, here is that option. One, obtain a total of one point two five million from one or more of the following sources. A, the city's uncollected property taxes, including its backlog. B, the city's approximately one hundred million in investments. C, the thirty million dollar capital budget and/or D, ARPA funds. Two, for the remaining one point two five million, ask each city department to cut its budget by approximately point seven percent, seven tenths of one percent. I am confident that almost all, if not all, departments could manage such a small reduction without endangering the safe operation of the city. Of course, this basic approach could be modified a bit if necessary. The key point is that if we take a little bit from the city's current resources and then make some small budget cuts, this will allow us to address the shortfall. I thank the Council for listening and for its hard work on the budget. David Shaw." Thank you.
Any other business from the Council? I know that, uh, Counselor Olson mentioned the, uh, he wanted to talk about this letter, uh, from Counsel, or which, uh, Mr. Kellum. About the RV. Okay, Counselor Bartholomew, you have your hand up? Well, the, the chance to read the letter? Oh, Counselor Olson?
Oh, yeah, I read the letter and, um, and I think, um, the ex-Counselor Kellum knows more about, uh, parking RVs than I do. And if it's a good idea, well, I, perhaps it ought to be explored. And I think probably, did I get it right, ought to be explored in the county? That they might have places where people could bar, park, park and bark.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counsel, Mr. Kellum.
In, in, I guess, I went to the, the county. Uh, I did, they did not come to me. And they, I asked them, would they be in favor of it? And they said, well, you know, if it can be worked out, there are some, there are some issues, such thing as the, the place I'm talking about in back of the expo, right next to the, the runways, is also the place where people, um, go when there is an emergency, like when the, the fire confr- conflagration. Um, and those things would have to be worked out. What I'm asking Council is there was a codicil in a contract someplace, as I recall, that it was not supposed to be used for outside, but that was when Blue Ox was dying. Uh, and there wasn't any expo, or, or, excuse me, there wasn't any, um, the one that the Sheeblers have across, across, um, the, the highway.
Yes.
Um, not to you. Um, now there isn't a problem. There is a problem. If you wanna park a big RV someplace, you got real, real issues finding a spot. And fighting one for long term, like you're gonna be around for the winter and then you're gonna take off again, is there's a mile-long waiting list. Um, there are sixty-some-odd spots at the expo. And when I spoke with, uh, expo staff, uh, they said, well, yeah, it could be worked out. So what I'm asking for is, I guess, your acquiescence, saying, hey, um, let's check this out. Make sure there aren't any big problems. If they can be, you guys, I guess you guys would probably get about twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a year more in TLT. And they would get three hundred thousand or something like that more, uh, which, I mean, everybody wins. Um, because there's no space available now in the existing, or very little space, actually. I guess as a side note to Peter, this kind of thing is what I was talking about when I, when I talked, spoke to you about having a yearly award or let's come up with ways of saving money or raising money or, and whoever comes up with the best one gets, you know, thousand dollar, whatever, uh, funded by somebody like me. But that, that's what I was talking about, the, to, to that point.
Mr. Kellum, I appreciate it. So, um, I will be asking the staff to take a look at this and my, during my time, so thank you. So, Counsel Johnson?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know exactly what Rich is talking about. It is hard to find a space. I mean, we're missing out on money. People that have big RVs and they travel a lot, when they stop, they shop. They, you know, they get gas, they get all kinds of things, and we are missing the boat on this. I, I mean, we do have, uh, the KOA out in the county, but, um, there's just a lack of space that could be used. And so I'm definitely for trying to look into this, see if we can find something.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. Counsel, uh, next on my business from the Council would be Counselor Kocenski.
Well, I concur with, uh, what, uh, Rich Kellum's saying all right down the line. I, I think we are missing some potential income. Uh, if people wanna spend money here, they're traveling through the area. Uh, we try and, we advertise and invite them to the community and then say, uh, come on through, but don't stop. Which doesn't make any sense to me. So I'm all in favor of trying to come up with some sort of a collaborative agreement with the county if we can do so.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Kocenski. Next, uh, this is from the Council, it's Counselor Novak.
Oh, I have already spoken, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you did. Uh, Counselor Smith?
Nothing this evening.
Counselor Bartholomew?
I have nothing tonight.
Counselor Olson?
Yes, I, I wanna thank the staff, uh, for this, uh, map on page thirty-two, where they used, uh, kind of a yellowish-orange to, uh, outline what we're supposed to be looking at. And, uh, complaining again, and maybe it's an odd infinitum, about this map where you used, uh, a pinkish-red, I think, against the, uh, green and gray coloring of the original map. And I, being one of the ten percent of the males in, in the world who tend to be red-green blind, I cannot see a thing on this map. Literally, I can see there's something there in the middle, but I cannot, I cannot make out what the map is supposed to show. And the rest of you will say, why is, it's just as plain as day? But, uh, not for Mr. Colorblind here, and I'm only partially colorblind, so. Again, thank, thanks for the map on thirty-two and raspberries for the map, or met- raspberries for the map. And thank you for the map on thirty-two.
So, um, last up is me. My business from the Council, I'm gonna thank Mr. Kellum for his letter. And, and I think we're looking into that, so thank you for that heads up. Uh, second thing is that I had the pleasure of visiting a, one of our local communities, uh, Brookdale, uh, Gary Street. I did a meet the mayor event and I invited, well, there's city councillors with me, Counselor Smith came with me. Uh, we kinda talked about the budget graphs, we talked about things going on in the city. Um, but the sweet people that live there threw me a birthday party for my birthday, my fifty-sixth birthday. So it was a really nice meeting with those folks and to share action outside. And so I thank Counselor Smith for coming and joining us in that, that conversation. Uh, last thing, um, have a wonderful, uh, so, next weekend. Stay safe, hydrate, stay out of the sun, cause it's gonna get hot here shortly. Hopefully all of you are safe and, um, have a great evening. And I will turn it over to City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it short. Just a, a reminder that our, our work session on July twelfth has been canceled. And July fourteenth will be back in the chamber. So the next meeting will be back in the chambers. Um, it's a hybrid meeting, so, uh, you are welcome to not wear a mask if you've been vaccinated. Uh, the public will participate virtually. But then, on the next meeting after that, July twenty-six, we anticipate, uh, opening the doors back to the public as well. And again, the, the, it's subject to OHA and OSHA guidelines. And as we were talking about earlier this evening, uh, those could change substantially between now and then. But I anticipate that we'll all go in the right direction. It'll get better. And I look forward to, uh, having people back in the chambers at the end of July. Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna call for the adjournment of the meeting. Uh, so thank you very much. Y'all have a great evening.
Have a good night, everybody.
Take care.